Okay, we're going to call the meeting de order. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Gross.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Protem Graham-Mahia.
Here.
Mayor Kusamoto. Absent. Cable Commissioners. Commissioner Clayton.
Here.
Commissioner Hasselbrink.
Here.
Commissioner Rothwell.
Here.
Vice Chair Jemset.
Present.
Chair Underwood.
Here.
Okay, so the special orders of the day are Item A, 2013 Cable Commission Equipment Survey. Staff, can we get a staff report on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor Protem, I was a City Council on that Cable TV Commission. At the July 11th LATV meeting and the July 30th Tech Committee meeting that we recently conducted, there's been a discussion of two proposals, basically headed up by Mr. Larry Strather and Mr. John Underwood, that were submitted. The hope was that they could corroborate on one list. I believe they've had a meeting, and at this time, we will ask them to make a proposal. They still have their individual proposals, is my understanding.
Yes.
And maybe we could ask in this order, Madam Mayor Protem, for Mr. Larry Strather to make a presentation on his proposal, and then also Mr. John Underwood after Mr. Strather. That would be the recommendation of staff.
Okay, well, what I'd like to do, thank you, Greg. Just a little background, on this last meeting, we realized that there were lots of items that both of the proposers had in common, that they shared, so we were trying to come up with a list of things that they agreed on, and maybe the things that they didn't. It would be easier to narrow down what it was we were kind of trying to make a decision on. What I would like to do is, I'm going to actually have that go in reverse, just out of respect for John. Larry went first last time, so I'd like to allow John to go first this time.
I prefer to defer to Larry. His report is more comprehensive and gives everyone a little bit of a more overall picture.
Okay.
He's gone to a lot of work to present visual aids.
Okay.
Simply making a presentation, so I'd like to follow.
Okay, John, just wanted to give you the option, since he got to go first last night. All right, Larry, it's in your court.
I tried to make this short, but I think we've got a lot of material, a very light weekend of reading. Basically, let's think about this. John and I talked on Friday, and it's trying to get this down to the very essence of what it is. And this is not about equipment. This is about a policy. This is about how the city and the station is going to spend money in the future, and whether you spend it on a piece-meal basis, piece of equipment here and there, or are you going to do a systematic plan by what you do stuff that's sustainable, that reduces labor costs, and will basically pay for itself down the road. And so I basically tried to make it as simple as possible, and it's the same thing, it's kind of covered in. The big thing you saw, just want to make sure, that was not a proposal, that was a giant survey. That was just, we did a survey of all the equipment at the studio. So if you wanted to bring it all up to date, these are the things you'd have to do. That was not a proposal, okay? The proposal was far more scaled back, and the proposal basically has come down to, I think, the council and the commission has to answer the question, what should be the role of community TV? I mean, you guys have to find what you want the station to do. But the station is not just PEG. PEG is one small aspect of this whole situation. PEG is only the thing you see on LATV free. That is not what you see if you want to go on the Internet. That's not what you see to doing, like, local origin. It's not access TV. High school sports is not technically PEG. It's local origin, okay? So a lot of times, stuff is mixed up, and it's not always the case. Anyway, I think the commission and the City Council have to decide, what should be the role of community television? Are the man-hours and energy spent on achieving this, all these council meetings, takes a lot of time of staff, and over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of meetings, I already called, going back to 2009? And if you do decide that the station's worth it, what's the best way the city can help LATV achieve that goal? To me, I think the role of community TV is to video coverage of local events of interest that would otherwise not be covered. And we can do a lot of that around here. We have great high school teams, we have a lot of great nonprofits, we just had World Series a couple of weeks ago. There's a lot of stuff that goes on around here that are really good events. I also think the stations have been very underutilized, doing, like, pre-event coverage. If Costco use shelters, they're going to have their bankroll. Why aren't we doing some little thing beforehand, say, hey, you know, Costco use shelters next week? We do it on occasion, John's done one, I think, for Kenny, Brandon Berry, and the pizza thing. But we should do more, more stuff like that. That's community television. And, you know, I think the station's a value when it does that. I think you also have to figure out delivering of local content to as many viewers as possible. Right now, you're likely being seen at desk in 66 percent of this community. The other third is either watching DirecTV, Echo Star TV, which is almost out of business, Dish TV, they're on a high-def antenna, or they're not doing cable, they're watching TV through the Internet. So one-third of your community's a different franchise from watching low-salt TV, just not the way stuff is, and you can probably hire it, because we're a very wealthy community, and they tend to be off that stuff. And another thing, TV should facilitate the, you know, government desire for transparency. You want to broadcast, make them available, video on demand, so that people can see the council meeting whenever they want to, they can watch it, you know, the next day. It may not be on LATV, but it may be, you know, available on YouTube, or however you want to do it, through the Internet, on smartphones, et cetera. Anyway, that, I think, are the key questions that the City Council has to answer. Are, you know, what should be the role of TV? Do we want to just be TV Channel 3, or not? Beyond that, I think, if you want to answer those questions, and you decide whatever it is, when you get to the equipment, I think, probably the best solution is, you guys are really, I understand, very careful of the money you're spending. You don't need to spend all that money now. I think a suggestion would be to find out, what is the studio capable of producing? You know, what do you need to make the studio capable of producing three to four shows a week? Go ahead and add that. Don't think about Panasonic versus Canon. Don't think about, you know, Tricaster versus, you know, whatever, you know, 4A. Think about, what do we need for what we want to do? So if John wants to do a couple of shows in the studio, I'm going to do a couple of shows in the studio, that means we need to have something that's capable of doing four shows a week. Okay, what piece of equipment will get us four shows a week? And what will give us the most bang for the buck? If you're doing a talking head show, then we need at least lights for six people, because you may have a guest invite, I mean, a host invite guests, I've done that on occasion. So that means you're going to need 18 lights. You need a key light, a fill light, and a backup. So that's a minimum you need. Are you going to do a performance? You're going to have a group in there. John said he wants to do show conference sessions, okay? So we're going to need some lights that are good for that. We don't have to decide on the brand yet, but let's decide what we need. Multiple basic set options. I think you have to consider, all right, backdrop. Right now, you've got just a black backdrop on one side there. You're limited to all shows looking alike. You know, normally, in my experience, it's always been, backdrops are usually, like, in a light gray, so they can be colored by gel. So, you know, I think you need that in there, that goes in front of that black backdrop, so you then need to slide back, and then you have that black backdrop there. I think you should put up some, you know, fake surfaces. I mean, I put up, like, it looked like bricks in the back there, just to cover up some things, but I think a couple of people, actually, it's a different panel here, it's coming from the brick, so we actually thought I put up a brick wall. So there's that, paneling, you know, green screen, set options, table index, audio. We need enough to handle up to, you know, eight or six guests, and then other audio inputs. Cameras. You need the minimum of four cameras to do a show. I think it's possible, we already have two good cameras. We have those HX200s already there. Why do we need to buy two more if we don't need them? Let's prove that we need them before we spend that money. The switcher. The switcher needs to handle, you have eight video sources, four high-def, and a minimum of four other inputs, that would be like computers, graphics, things like that, PowerPoints, Skype, graphic storage. You need a 16-channel audio board, who goes with that, and we're all agreeing on the audio board we're talking about, I think. The van. Left out of John's, what he talked about, is there's nothing in there to account for how much is necessary to make that van digital. And that's a policy decision that the board has to make, overall. You need to decide, yes, we want to upgrade, because it's really hard to buy equipment that's supportable, you know, on the lower end nowadays. We can get that Tricaster, but we can't use it. I mean, you could cut, whatever they buy for the studio, if it's high-def, we can't use it right now in the truck. The equipment, the cameras aren't, you know, you can't take a hit, pull the van, yes, you can do it, but you're buying something at a high-end and using it at a minimal cost. Distribution. I think we have to make LATV live programming screen available to as many local viewers as possible, but how do you do that? You need a device that will stream it on the Internet, and a device that will store it, and maybe do it, make it available on demand. So those are the basics. I try to condense everything I have there, if you have one sheet here, it's a powerful one. Should have done that first. But that's, I think that's the biggest decision to make, because I think, once you decide those various things, the rest kind of fall into place. You're not going to argue back and forth, but if one thing does what you want, and costs less than the other thing, but does what you want, I think it's pretty easy decision. Anyway.
Is that it, Larry?
That's it.
Okay, thank you so much. You ready, John?
Well, I thought we were going to talk about equipment, but I can see that maybe we have to talk about this first, about the overall. I think what Larry is talking about, in so many words, is basically management of LATV. Who's going to make these decisions? I don't, I'm trying to find something to disagree with that Larry has said, and I really don't disagree with anything he said. As hard as I might try, I agree that we have to look at priorities first, we have to set these management priorities, we have to set up, what is it we want out of LATV? We've been around since 1984. We've been through a lot of different permutations of LATV. It's looked like a lot of different things over the years. There've been times when we've been strictly non-commercial all the way down the line. There've been times when we've run commercials from time to time under certain management. So we're sort of all over the board about that. What do we want to be in relation to other PEG operations across the state, which I know a little something about? I can tell you that there are, I can't count on two fingers, the number of PEG operations that are actually running commercials, running a rate card, in the state of California. I personally feel that even though it would certainly make my job a lot easier, as a producer trying to raise money to produce shows, to pay crew and materials, to be able to run a rate card, but I just feel we'd run afoul of some of the franchisers, and some of the regulations in this state have tried to do that. And that's not to say that things haven't loosened up, as Larry has said. They have loosened up, and I think the FCC and the Public Utilities Commission recognizes that, and because all of the PEG operations in California and across the country are reeling from the lobbying manipulation of the telcos, that eviscerated our funding from 7 percent, in our case, down to a little, about a dollar a household.
Yeah, can I ask you real quick, John? If it's not pertaining to this, should we move on to the policies and procedures? Would you like to see that be where we go, since this sounds like it's more of a policy?
Well, I am getting to the point.
Okay, all right.
I'd like to make that point about management specifically. I'll move directly to that.
Okay.
And not engage in any conversation about equipment, per se.
Okay.
I do see, it's true, I did not include in my proposal much about van operations. I don't feel that it's my place to do so. I feel that Larry and Kirk have a solid handle on van operations, and I think that they should be allowed to make their own proposals and come forward with their own initiatives for van operations, and how to raise money from van operations to make that happen. We have basically, you know, three major spheres of operations at LATV. As I mentioned, van operations, server operations are also extremely important. They're little seen, but they're very important. They are primarily run by Doug Woods, who is, I'm quite happy with, because he's accessible to me at all times of day and night, if I need to. If I need to come in there, of course, I have to accommodate him too, but we were in there the other night, at 11 o'clock at night, because I had something I needed, I wanted to get up on the server, and he accommodated that. So I think, I think he's doing a very good job in server operations. Then, of course, there's studio operations, which is something I have a certain passion for, and have since 2007, when I found that empty building over there, and went to Ken Stevens, then mayor, and asked him for funding to support that facility, to reestablish our studio. And he was helpful. In fact, he named it Studio One. But I think there is, in that sense, a natural division of labor that breaks out as playback operations, server operations, van operations, which I think Larry and Kirk are doing a pretty good job at, and then studio operations. And there's nobody really riding herd over the studio, and in the sense of watching the equipment, maintaining the equipment, looking at what needs to be upgraded over there in the studio. We all have our own ideas, but there's nobody, there is no traffic cop over there. And that's a dangerous situation for a facility with a lot of assets like that. And in my proposal, I would like to make the recommendation that we essentially create that, that formalize that natural division of labor. Server operations, primarily maintained by Doug Woods, with the support of other engineering staff, and he's in the process of teaching me certain aspects of what he does. Kirk can do it very well, he's back there doing it right now. And van operations, as I said, in the capable hands of Larry Strather and Kirk Stevens. But I think that studio operations is something, is where the community intersects with LATV, in a public relations and in a promotional sense. It's a brick-and-mortar presence that the community will come to know and respect as the place where they can go to be part of LATV, not just support LATV. And I think it's that attitude that I think I can bring to the studio, and in my proposal, I've made the offer, for a period of time, to be that person, to take on that role, without any pay whatsoever, because I'm that sure that the studio can generate the kind of results that we are all looking for. Increase production, increase quantity of production, but also increase quality of production. When we can increase the quality of production coming out of that studio, then we really have something, a product that we can take to the sponsoring community, and then that they will want to put their brand on, their name on. Right now, Southland puts its, Southland Credit Union puts its name on City Watch, hosted by Rick Pap, and they're happy with it, because it represents their company well. It looks good, it's not just more programming on the air, it's programming that is quality, that they are willing to put their name on. That's a corporation, and it's important that the quality of program at least match the quantity, if not precede it. So I think that's a very important point. And I do think there is one key element missing in all of this, in this division of labor that I have envisioned for LATV, and I think that we need, that piece of the puzzle that's missing, is an individual, one person, who knows LATV historically, institutionally, a person who might be willing to sit in and do the overall general management duties of LATV, and be able to parse out, you know, the arguments, the divisions, and the differences of opinion that might crop up between us all. And I think that's what's needed at LATV, in terms of a management position, is an individual, maybe even just a part-time person, but somebody who knows the field, the media, knows LATV, knows the city of Los Alamos, and can be that someone who can basically referee. Sit in on the meetings, take the notes, report back to the city. In other words, the liaison or ombudsman to LATV for the city. And we don't have to commit city manager time to that effort, or even city secretary staff time. But I would be willing to try, to create a business model where the studio would run itself, with very, except for equipment, of course, because none of us can afford, you know, $6,000 cameras and a $10,000 switcher. But I mean, the day-to-day operations, I'm willing to throw in for that, and give of my time for a period of time to manage the studio facility, to show everybody that it can work, we can get producers in there, who will produce quality programming, that in turn will generate sponsorship from the community, that they will want to put their brand and their name on, and make the studio self-sufficient. And I'm assuming that van operations can do the same. When Doug and I ran the truck for a period of time, when John Ochoa basically disappeared, Doug Woods and I ran the van operations for one season, one athletic season, September through the spring, and we made the boosters pay. They didn't like it, but they did, because they wanted it. And I think that that is a model that we can at least explore in conversationally here at LATV, instead of pouring thousands of dollars into sports operations that basically come out of LATV's pocket. So I think that van operations, sports operations, server operations is a little bit of an exception, because it's a paid position, but I think that van operations and studio operations can run themselves, if the people with the vision that run those operations now are given authority over them, with the proviso, that there is an individual representing the city, the local franchise authority, the LFA, as they're called, that is negotiating party with the franchisers, if the city has an individual who can manage, in an overview way, manage the three spheres of operations at LATV, and keep us all working together.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the board and the council. Does anyone have any questions? Steve actually asked if he could speak first, so I'm going to go ahead and...
Okay, basically, I sat on the tech committee, and I chaired the LATV Board of Directors years ago, when we had a solid, you know, station running, when we had resources and all those things. I'm kind of at the point, just for your own information, I'm kind of at the point now where I don't really care anymore. It's like, whatever happens, happens, you know? The whole reason that I even got into this is because I watched for many years, after the former board was disbanded, that the city had problems with it, and they were spending a lot of city council time dealing with this. And then that's just a loss of resources. I didn't think it was smart, but it's what it was. So I just watched it for year after year, and then I saw John, and I saw Larry starting getting involved, and the city trying to run the station, but just not knowing how to do it, forming a commission that couldn't do it. You know, one thing after the other, one, just throwing money, throwing everything they can at this thing, trying to make it work, and it just didn't work, and it hasn't worked, you know, up to this point. And here we are, sitting at all of this time, tech committee, blah, 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 all of that. And I think the, just, I'm a professional, I've been doing this for over 25 years. I did the Long Beach Cable Commission for 15 years, chaired that one, I've been involved in access television forever, and worked at Long Beach City College, like I said, in their media services for over 26 years. So I, and I put together quite a few studios, know access, all of this stuff. I think that a lot of what both of those gentlemen said were absolutely true and good, okay? But the biggest thing that I see was, obviously, what I already said, the lack of knowledge as far as how to run it and how to maintain it and all that. But now I see a tremendous conflict of interest, and that's been going on for quite some time. And it's still going on, and that's why the tech committee has such a hard problem, a hard way of getting things done, because everybody wanted to have what they wanted to have. And what John was saying, actually, is very true. There needs to be a third party, there needs to be an organization with the knowledge and the ability to chart the future for LATV, not only from a goals and objectives standpoint, but from a technical standpoint as well, knowing what Larry's group needs, knowing what John's groups need, you know, knowing how that, what kind of studio facility we do have, what kind of resources we have, and how can we maximize that potential to its best. And so as long as there's a conflict of interest, we're always going to have this problem. Everybody's going to be going at it. And I think, right now, there's, I watch, I watch the channel now, and I see shows on there, it's like, what the heck is this? I mean, it's nice that we're having a lot of programming, that's really good, but you see things on there, like, well, somebody was doing somebody a favor, because who's interested in that? You know, I see it on both sides. So I don't want to even mention what I saw, I just saw, but I've seen enough on both sides to say, you know, this is weird, why are we showing this? There must be three people interested in this, and obviously, those three people are getting impressed. But it's critical that all of the things that John mentioned happen, that we have a goals, that we have a direction that we need to go. And the equipment, boy, that's the easiest part of it. That just falls into place. That, you know, once you know all the other things, that's easy. That's a simple one. So, I mean, save ourselves a lot of trouble, and we need to operate the station. We need to have somebody else, some organization, some group, or some person, or whatever, however you want to fashion it, but somebody that can make these decisions independently, without any influence from either one of the parties that are involved, and their only goal is to maximize all the resources, and maximize the wonderful talent that we have here, because we're fortunate, really fortunate, that we have two people, in particular Larry and John, that really want to do this. And, you know, most cities don't have that many people that want to do it at the level they do. So that's awesome. But there needs to be somebody in between, somebody with no ties to either one, somebody that can make the right decisions. Yeah, so watching all of these, this bickering, going back and forth, and picking out this, don't do this, don't, to me, it's wrong, it was wrong to begin with, and it's been that way ever since, and so we can still squabble like this and create an equipment list, but I really think the smart thing to do is to create either a group or a person that can actually do the things that I mentioned. And then I think everything else will fall into place, and these guys will be able to do all the things they want to do and more. I totally can see that happen.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just, I wanted to make a point of order. Are we going to open this to the public, or at some point, to other speakers?
We can do that. Usually, we go a first round, then we open it to the public, is that right? Yeah. So do you have anything, Richard?
Yeah, it's, it's an odd approach, because I want to ask the group that actually knows what's going on here, to take the gloves off for the next two hours and hash this out, okay? Everybody knows that there's several factions here, but let's get it on the table and try and make a decision. Being nice and dancing around it isn't going to get it done. So if people who know what they're doing, and certainly not me, having read this for two days, have opinions that can, you know, can say, this is what we should do, let's hear that. Let's hear, let's hear what makes sense. I mean, I think, you know, we need to answer this digital versus analog question somewhere soon, to see what direction we're going in. I mean, I couldn't pick up one of these pieces of equipment on a bed, except for the one that says camera, I could probably make a good guess, but, so let's have an open, honest discussion. That's what we're all, what we're all here for, and see where we are. I mean, nobody's feelings are going to get hurt, you know, let's just do it.
Are you looking for that from John and Larry, or are you looking at...
Well, all the people on the committee, you know, the technical people, and the two of you have been on the ad hoc committee, you know...
Well, the unfortunate thing, Richard, is that the technical people are not here, if I understand correct, because I checked today, and I know we've got one of them running the videoing of this, and the other one could not attend. So I agree with you that, with that, because they are the ones who have the expertise in this.
And there's two more.
Well, no, I'm saying other than these two. They're not the ones running the cameras and doing that.
And Steve.
Well, I happen to have one. Excuse me.
You're a commissioner right now, but what I was looking for is the people who have been engaged in this. That's what you wanted, is people who have been doing it. So those people are...
Tell us what, you know, one of the funniest things about this position is, is many times I feel we know the least, but yet we have the votes. Like, when Stephen Doze is telling us something, I don't have his background, you know, but, so I'm going to listen to what he has to say, and I respect everybody's background here, actually like everybody here, so, you know, let's just get it out and see where we are, and how do we... You know, everybody's taken a lot of time here to make your proposals, and obviously, for the good of the station, maybe from, you know, a slightly biased point of view, but that's any group, any person, you know, nobody, nobody does anything totally altruistically, okay? So I'll repeat one more time, let's discuss it, and get it out there, and see where we are, you know? And that's my point.
Good. Anything from you, Troy?
Yeah, I'd like to start off and to say, John and Larry, thank you for everything you do for the community. And, but from, like, right now forward, I think it's going to be a tough discussion. I honestly know even less than Richard does about TV, but I'm going back to the basics for me. We peg, you know, public education, government. Education and government handled by server operations, a guy here, fixed cameras, and a bicycle tape that gets brought over from Rossmore and potentially the school district, and we've met 2/3 of the requirements of why we get that. And we've met two-thirds of the requirements of why we get that money. So, really, what we're talking about today is the public portion of PEG, P, which is the community program. And I just wanna keep it in perspective. P has been killing us since I've been on the city council, and we can't seem to get a handle on it. And the P has to do with how much community program, and whether it's in the studio or outside. And again, just to look at it from a business perspective, because I'm not invested in it, I know Steve and I've had discussions about this, and I would, just about everybody here, it's super easy for me. How much revenue do we get a year based on what the assembly bill that passed three, four years ago? How much revenue do we get to do this business? Do we wanna subsidize it even more? But, let's start at the basics, that's the minimum. So, we ask the question, can we afford to have anybody more than the PEG, than the camera operator, server operations guy or not? Let's go back to the budget and see, do, can we afford that? That would be question number one. The second question is that, as this thing starts to roll forward, the elephant in the room is the savings account, the fund balance, whatever you wanna call it. So, we decommissioned this thing a bunch of years ago, and we put a bunch of money in the bank, whether it was a general fund, or we hifoned it off by itself, but there's a chunk out there, and we have a TV operation that needs money, and we can't, I mean, the bottom line, why we're here tonight, we can't decide how to spend the savings account, because we know that however we spend it makes a philosophical difference for the next 10 to 20 years for this district, and it's limited. And if you're in my shoes, and you're worried about the finance part, you don't wanna get on the treadmill you can't afford every year. I keep fighting so that any time where the city takes on an extra expense, I wanna make sure it's not a recurring expense I can't afford, then I go back to what was the funding again. Because I will tell you from the city council, one of five, we never, you know, looked at this as thinking that this was going to, we were going to pay more than the revenue we got in. This was way below police, below parks and rec, but very critical. But, I mean, this isn't my view, this is what the council has said every budget period, this is what the revenue is. So, I just wanna look at it from two easy perspectives. If you look at the revenue and you say, what is it policy-wise, you know, to go with Larry for a bit, is the policy that we wanna spend more than what we get in in revenue? And if the answer is no, and it's been no at the council, and, you know, anybody in the council can re-adjendize that in a budget workshop, but right now, the answer is no. So, we should be trying to work towards that model, and if there's something more than that, then we should, it should be worked at the commission. Because I firmly believe we form the commissions because, for the same reason we're here, we don't have a clue, and we pick the best people in the community to try to help out. And the problem is, and I'm reading between the lines, the conflict of interest that Steve is talking about is a conflict on the board, because, you know, look, people don't think we are competent enough to run the city, but it comes down to our votes, and whatever comes out of it, the city moves on day by day. In the cable commission, we've got the best qualified people. I'll live with your vote, even if it's, you know, if there's politics involved and we can't get around it because of conflict, then we should just blow it up and hire somebody and go back to the budget question. The last point that I have is on the savings account. I would like to walk out today to be able to know exactly how much was put into the account when we decommissioned and stopped and put it on timeout, or whatever we wanna call it, then we brought it back, then we did some stuff, and we did some ancillary spending, like, you know, kinda like paper cuts, constantly, like, a little bit more, a little bit more, enough to piss everybody off that they never got what they wanted. And let's find out how much it is, and then, back to the big question is the policy, what type of TV station are we gonna have? It's gonna go to what type of a TV station can we afford? Some of the stuff that's talked about, I've heard revenue models for the last three to four years, I buy into it, I bought into John, I'm still bought in, I bought into Larry, I'm still bought in, I love it. You know, I'm not an aficionado, I turn it on, I see stuff on there. I'm not even as jaded as Steve, I, you know, if it's something for Casa, or if it's something for, you know, the Sugar Beet, I mean, you know, two totally different styles, right? Sugar Beet Festival, I watched somebody work out in Seal Beach at a gym, I watched the whole thing build up to the Sugar Beet Festival, a different approach. And then, I see John, look, I was glad that some of the stuff, like Precious Life, some of these things that he captures is actually documented for historical purposes for our city. That's a different purpose than trying to build up attendance at an event like what we did. And again, so, all I would say is I just, I wanna go back to the basics. If it's a policy issue, let's go back to the money, because the policy issue is can we afford to do something different on the savings account? If honestly, the smartest people, even if it's politically biased, can't come to a conclusion on the account, because, you know, I thought tonight was, we were actually gonna get a recommendation from the cable commission, not be the referee of why we can't do that. And I feel like now I'm gonna have to pick. I, believe me, I don't have any issue doing it, but I really wanted to, I mean, I'm not, I haven't studied it other than, you know, the two hours too. I'm not sure I could make the philosophical leap with you guys. I like both of you, I think we're so blessed to have everybody that's at this table that does this TV part in our community. I don't wanna do something that indirectly, like, hampers that and gets people discouraged so they stop doing it, because in the small town, this is all we have. So, those are the points where I'm at. Like I said, if I, if we end up having to come to be the referee of how to spend the savings account, which is what I feel we're here for, I think we failed. I think we failed. So, revenue, Greg, I think when we get to it, whenever the right time, please let me know how much the revenue is, and then that, does that fit with the potential of somebody running it to be the referee that knows what's going on versus the cable commission? And then, the bank account, how much is in the bank account? And is this proposals, are these hard leans against it right now, and that's really what we're talking about? Yeah?
The unaudited and estimated fund balance is $110,000, $188. And, so, it's been, in 2008, it was $129,000, you know, 2953,000. There was one year, there was some equipment purchased. 2011, it was $116,000. 2012, it was $137,000. So, currently, we have $110,000, $188. But, once again, that's unaudited, so, talking to finance today, the number could go up some. You know, since I've been here, I've been hearing 106 as a bottom, so, 110. And, you know, we've had proposals for anywhere from $35,000 to $90,000, it's just discussion type of proposals of equipment. So, Troy, yeah, it's $110,000 is what we have right now. Of course, we wanna be very judicious with that, of course, because this is very precious dollars for us, so, that's, I think that's what everybody thinks.
On that, so, $110,000, we've got two proposals, monetary values of this. If we theoretically, not that we would, but if we went all in and said, we're just gonna fund the two proposals, because these guys have, are they in complete conflict long-term?
No.
Or is it just, we don't know if we can bite that to make the long-term investment? Is that the issue? Or we've gotta pick one over the other, because...
Let me see if I can clarify. What I was saying earlier is, on the wish list, if that's what you wanna call it, for what they think is necessary for both the van and the studio, there are lots of things that they agree upon, there are some things that they don't. But, the biggest thing is the order in which they would prioritize them. So, where Larry thinks that the station could be a way of generating money for us, so, let's put a little bit of money into the station to give it what it needs so that we can draw others in from outside of our own community who may want to use our station, because they don't have that in their community, or the same thing with the van, that's a way of generating revenue to make the station self-sustaining. That's just a, that's just a rough approach to what we were looking at.
So, if those two proposals got done all in, out of the 110, how much have we spent?
About 90.
95, okay.
How much was carried over?
$110,000. Yes. Yeah. 120, 30, I can't remember.
Okay, are you done, Troy? Just, Larry, go ahead.
Troy, just so they answered the question, and I brought financials that needed to put together back in 2009 for the meeting. When LATV was taken over by the city, they had assets of $232,000. There's a lot of money spent during fiscal year 2007, '08, a total of $40,000 was taken in revenues, $55,000 was spent in operation costs. The following year, the budget was for, the budget was for, I haven't even got it here, but the estimated revenues were $30,000, and as of December 31st, already $28,900 had been spent. So, LATV was leaving about $5,000, or, excuse me, $15,000 a year. When we took over CSMP, and we were the first ones to bring it in under budget, and we did that, that's why it's hard to hear a lot of stuff. When we took it over, we were the first ones to bring it in, in the operations costs under budget for the two years that we ran it. We did that, and that's why Jeff Stewart recommended that we run the studio, because we came in under budget and the other party didn't. And we also increased the programming drastically, and Jeff submitted a report at the end of 2010, you know, when he recommended it, you know, it's on the agenda, you can go back and check your notes, the very last meeting of, first meeting of December 2010. But, we had did more programming on the smallest budget, the most local programming in station history, more than anybody ever did under the old corporation. And we have never spent, or rarely spent LATV dollars on sports. I got them funded through the Booster Club, and I got sponsors. And so, I mean, I've taken home no money this year, other than, what, CBS has made a grant, and so, we've taken one, but they're not a sponsor, but, we've gone out, and one thing you never see is, the CSMP budget is never here. We raised about $25,000 that goes into program. You know, you only have about six or seven, but I've gotten like, the biggest asset, given me 10 grand a couple of years, and that's gone to a lot of different events. We've done coverage of We Care, we've done coverage of, you know, other events, we have the Jewish, the family children services, other buildings, whatnot. And so, you guys don't see that in the budget here, because it just doesn't run to you. But, that's money CSMP has applied directly to LATV. We bought a lot of equipment, we paid for a good chunk of that Tricaster. You know, we bought cameras that are not part of the LATV budget, but we bought, we use them all the time at events, so, you know, just look at the numbers for LATV, I think it's kind of misleading over the last couple of years. You don't see a lot of stuff there.
Okay. Troy, is that it? Okay, Dean, you wanted to go?
You know, we're right back to where we started with, and that's, I'm better than he is, and he's better than I am. And I spent three and a half hours in the ad hoc tech meeting and came away with no solutions despite the fact that we really tried. I think the initial analysis that Larry gave about policy was what came out of that meeting, and that we truly need to do that. And I've read through all of this, I've gone through the financials, I've asked for additional financials, I gave you a copy of what I got from the staff, some of it is just flat missing, doesn't exist. It bothers me to hear, I bought equipment, whose equipment is it? Is it your equipment, or is it the city's equipment? You're using equipment, you're using equipment, and equipment breaks down, who's paying for the repairs? To see that we're at $110,000 approximately puts it to a point where we've gotta stop. Going back through the 2007, it looks like we were paying CMP, your group Larry, roughly $2,086 a month. And that's a chunk of money. And I look back and try to say, well, where are we from the standpoint of that investment? And is that, is that the model we really wanna follow? I think from the ad hoc committee, we need to sit down and go through, I think it's item B, which is the policy, and make some decisions from the standpoint of what the city wants of LATV, what we're going to do moving forward. And as we go through that policy, paragraph by paragraph, if we have to, some of this I have no conflict with, this is the document that was adopted in November of 2009 and updated by the commission in 2012, there's things in there that still don't make sense to me from the standpoint of why they're there. But, we come away from it, we have a better understanding of where we're headed. Once we know where we're headed, whether it's digital, or it's analog, or piecemeal as we're going on, then we've got a better ability to decide on equipment. We also have an ability to see, is there a revenue stream coming in? Or, you know, one of the discussions was, that was told to us, I don't remember which one of you, you buy this equipment and it's good for 10 years, so you won't need anything again for 10 years. I've never seen anything that works that way. I don't even think you can, you know, buy a computer that they're gonna warranty for 10 years, and a lot of this is computer-driven. So, I would rather see us focus, if we have to tonight, back to the starting, and look at the policies and procedures, see what parts of it we agree to, what parts of it we need to tweak, and call out the first step. If we need to do this again, I'd rather the commission at this particular point take that over, that the council agrees, these five pages or six pages are the policies, you've been here when we tried to put them all together, you have a feel of what the intent of the council is, then you take it from that point and move it forward. You know, John pushed on the idea of a non-biased individual, Steve said the same thing. The way I see it, we've been paying a city manager's salary to be the staff liaison to this commission. It's terrible. That means we've got the time of the city manager that's not needed to do city management, and we're spending it, and we're condoning that type of an operation, we shouldn't be. If we've allocated $2,000 a month for one group to come in and run it and do it under budget, if we're getting 100, or if we're getting $31,000 a month from monies coming in, revenue coming in, I've asked the question repeatedly, where's that money being spent? And I can see $1,600 a month going to one individual, and another $500 a month going to one individual, and there's nobody overseeing it, there's nobody signing off on time slips, there's no accountability. Gee whiz, he just turned in all of 2012 to be paid, a whole year later. And that makes no sense to me. And as a council, we talked about it, but we didn't do anything to fix it. And so, we need at this particular point to either, A, designate an existing staff member, which, I don't know who that would be, that has knowledge enough of this to be able to take it over. Or, we make a decision that we contract this whole kit and caboodle out and do it in a way that it's economic to us. Now, there was an individual that was involved back when it was a nonprofit, that was a representative of staff that had understanding of what was going on. That individual, and I'm not lobbying in a predictive direction at this point, but that individual has availability and could come in and work. And so, if there's a potential of doing something here that becomes win-win, then we need to do a little bit about what Richard said, let's take off the gloves, let's sit down, let's figure out what's gonna be best in the interest of the citizens and the city and the community as we try to put this thing back together and everybody work harmoniously. We know that's not gonna happen, that there's gonna be issues, but you need somebody who has the fortitude and the direction from council and city management to say, no, not gonna do that. This past weekend with the Little League thing that went on, the World Series, a piece of equipment that is used between the studio and the van and here breaks. Now, in one case, I'm being told it was broken when they got it, in another case, it was broken the day of the event, and they had to go out and rent it. Now, who made that decision and who approved it? Because it's funds being spent on behalf of LATV or the city. From what I can tell, no one did.
That's why LATV's not a production.
I didn't say the production, I'm saying the critical piece of equipment that was needed. So, it had to be rented, and going back through the financials, I'm seeing repairs on that two, three, four times. And so, the question is, who's making these decisions? Because money's being spent, money's being allocated, and it's whoever happens to be involved at that particular time. I'm not saying criticism on anybody. I'm saying, let's put it on the table, and let's figure out why we're doing the things that we're doing, and how we could do it more effectively. So, we're still using one piece that floats between here, in the council chamber, the studio, and the van. And that one piece of equipment, the switcher, whatever it was called, Tricaster, was the one I kept saying at the meeting, why aren't we going ahead and focusing on that one piece of equipment then that we can agree upon? We need at least two of, so that we have some type of backup capability. I'm being told, whether it's right or wrong, that piece of equipment has a propensity to break. There's other hardware equipment that doesn't break, because it doesn't function in the same fashion, but produces the same results. So, why aren't we looking at that piece of equipment? So why aren't we looking at that piece of equipment from the standpoint of what we're talking about? So I'll stop at this particular point and let the rest of the commission work in. But I would rather go to, to, uh, item B here on the policy and go through that. Uh, because I've been through it, uh, at length, and a lot of it, I can see there's absolutely no conflict with. It makes sense. It, it talks about digital files if somebody's going to turn stuff in. Uh, it talks about other things. I'd like to see some definitions on what some of this actually is, such as a station manager. It refers in this document to a station manager. Who is that? Is that the city manager? Nobody knows, you know, because it doesn't exist. So it either shouldn't be in there or we should be looking for somebody to be a station manager on a part-time basis, whether it's two hours a week, 10 hours a week, whatever is, is comfortable within the budget that we have. Um, we talk about public access. We talk about education. We talk about government. There's really nothing that defines the commission, uh, in here and what the commission's rule is. What is public access? What is educational? What is government? Are, what's the relationship with the school district? We're putting on Rossmore stuff, and at one time we were getting $1,200 a month, I think it was,
Yes.
in revenue from Rossmore for putting their program on.
1,500.
1,500.
1,500. We're not getting it, and yet we're still doing the program. Why? You know, because it's public access? Okay. It actually talks in here a little bit about what, what Steve brought up in terms of turning on the TV and saying, "What in the heck is that?" And why is it on at 6 o'clock or at 7 o'clock? We run programs because people bring them in and we're trying to fill airspace to look like we're doing stuff, but what is it? Church services out of Long Beach, military shows from whoever? According to the policy, according to the guidelines, that stuff's after all of the other local stuff. And it's not even being administered. So does the commission help make that decision? That's things I think we need to really be able to give commission direction on, because they're trying. They're, they're meeting. They want to do the right thing. We want them to do the right thing. But I don't think it's clear in looking at these exactly who's doing what and why. So my recommendation was be, we start on B. If nothing else, we come away from this meeting with a better policy. And then we can move forward from the standpoint of starting, starting to look at equipment, whether we bring in a person or not, which I think is the smartest decision at this particular point. If we bring in somebody on a, on a part-time hourly basis, if we have to make cuts elsewhere to make it happen, then we do that until we get this thing functioning.
Thank you, Dean. Shelley, anything?
Um, I'm sorry, I'm going to be a little... I thought we were coming here today to look at the equipment, look at the proposals and get a direction to move forward to bring us up to date. Um, I didn't know we were going to have a proposal to add a fourth layer to an operation, because we have the city council, we have the commission, we have the tech meeting, and now we have a fourth layer being proposed, which is just going to add, I think, more vagueness to what everybody's responsible to be doing. Um, I look at the station and I looked at these proposals and, you know, I mean, the commission, the past three months, basically the only thing that we've agreed and voted on is T-shirts. And that frustrates me, because I think we're a much bigger operation than really cool T-shirts and slick jackets. Um, I've been asked-
We agreed on an equipment proposal.
John, let's let hers speak.
We, we, we didn't, we agreed on the equipment inventory. We did not agree on equipment to buy to move forward to bring us to the 19th century, not much more to the 20th century. We haven't been able to come across with priorities of what LTV is. LTV is not Studio One. It is a combination of things. It's first and foremost broadcast, because I don't care if you're LTV or CBS or ESPN, you are all driven by the amount of viewers that you have. And to get more viewers, you need to broadcast to more people, period. We have a tremendous amount of programming within the school district and within the community that people don't have access to. The entire city of Seal Beach has never heard of LTV. They don't have access to it. So how do we get the programming to them? Because that's 50% of our school district. How do we get the programming to them? We need to upgrade our broadcasting capabilities, get a bigger audience. What about all the people that aren't watching TV anymore? My kids don't watch TV. They watch everything on their computer. How do I get them to watch, watch this programming? You bring it to them. So what is that? Is that updating LTV for the studio first, the van first? Or is that bringing the viewers here and then the rest of it will fall into place? Because now you can go out and you can ask booster clubs, "This is our viewership. It's not just Verizon and Time Warner. It's everybody that has computer access, which pretty much everybody does." So, you know, we've got this bucket of money that we've had for a while now. It's been sitting there. So how do we spend it? What do we prioritize? I thought that's what we were going to be doing today. So we were going to walk out saying, "Okay, we're going to, we're going to first spend the money on this," because I'm not comfortable asking the city, "you know what, we need $94,000 and it's all or nothing right now, and if you can't do it right now, we're not going to do any of it." I've been asking in the commission meetings to, "Let's put it in buckets and let's prioritize the timing of funds and how we can do this to better serve the bigger audience." Because we can't go to the school district and ask for money or the booster clubs and ask for money and saying, "But nobody in Seal Beach is going to see this programming." And nobody that has Dish Network or DirecTV is going to see this program. We can't ask for booster club money. But if we can say, you know, "We've got live streaming, we've got all this," and so that's kind of, you know, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of rambling on, but that's kind of where my notes are about how we can move forward and let's... Because the commission hasn't been able to do anything. We sit there and we talk for an hour and we haven't been able to do anything. And I think that's why we brought the city council in, because we want to be able, I want to be able to do something. We've got T-shirts now. Now let's get some broadcasting equipment. Let's get, you know, our van updated so we can do the majority. I mean, I looked at the LTV broadcasting schedule, 90% of it is out in the field. So why isn't that more of a priority? Then when we get more revenue in, then we can update the studio. And then when we get more revenue in, then we can update the archives and the storage area. But let's put this into priority and let's get something done, rather than just, you know, because I, I, right now, I don't understand what the role of the commission is. Because we haven't done anything, so...
Can I, can I clarify one thing from my perception on the council? And that is, I understand a bulk of the school district is in Seal Beach. Seal Beach has their own operation down there. And short of putting it on the internet, which is part of this upgrade of equipment and direction to go on, our function really is the residents that are here. And I concur totally with Larry and you about building viewers and knowing where the viewers are coming from. But to focus on the idea that we're going to do it for the school district, school district isn't paying anything toward this either. And so even running their board meetings, we're not getting anything back. Um, at one point, there was an idea that there would be a partnership, I think back during the old 501(c)(3). There were classes held over there and some of the kids from the classes came in and helped to produce shows and to, to do things in a learning process. And that's a, a good model that I'm in favor of, but I don't think our focus from the standpoint of the city is what we can do to get into the viewer situation in Seal Beach. Uh, if they pick it up over the net or we advertise it in that way, that's something totally different. But I think we've got to focus here. And, and, uh, and I agree with you, Shelley. I mean, I think we, we need to have clarity with the commission, what their function and role is going to be moving forward. And, and that to me is the very first step. The money that's there is money that's not going to get replaced. There's no, no system in place to replace that money. And so if we go buy equipment and we, we, uh, spend 90,000 of it, we spend 50,000 of it, there's no 50,000 coming back to replace it, because we're just not getting the revenue from the standpoint. All we have is the PEG money that's coming in, which is 31,000, is it?
Approximately.
Yeah.
And, you know, looking at this, uh, Big Ten has been the loss of Austin.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, you know, there's going to be 13 and 15,000.
Okay. Shelley, do you have any more? Let's let, let's do this, just so in the interest of time. Let's let Shelley finish. Each person will get to go. We'll go to the public and then we'll come back and we can go.
And I, I was using the school district as an example. Um, I can use LAYB as the same example. If you came to Los Alamos baseball and said, "You know what, we can put your opening day on Channel 3, LTV", there's not a big interest there, because there's a lot of people that live in Los Alamos, Rossmore, that play at Los Alamos, but there's a lot that don't. But if you livestream it, I know the World Series was livestreamed and they were sitting over at Mr. Bee's and it was livestreamed on there. And guess what? Our audience tripled.
Right.
Because we were able, now if you come back as LTV and said, "You know what, Los Alamos, we can livestream opening day, playoffs, all kinds of different things, and here's your viewership", Los Alamos as an organization would be able to, um, approve money being spent for live broadcasting. Right now, it doesn't make any sense. It's too small of an audience. So, and I was using the school district, because we just broadcast so much from the different school functions and the community functions. But if we can increase our broadcasting capabilities, then we can go back and ask for, for money on that. So that was, that's my only clarification.
Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. Alice?
Oh, here, let me get you the microphone.
All right. Um, I've spent a lot of time on all of these pages and pages and pages over the weekend. And one of the things that I think we really need to do is we say, "We have to follow policy." I think we need to really get down to very carefully writing down what our policies are on different issues so that there's no question when someone comes in and wants to do a show or feels they have a good show that they can do, and is it appropriate for our station? Um, also, I have been nagging, I'll admit it, for having Doug get a class started, especially for our youngsters. And it can be for the oldsters too, so that they can understand what it takes to put a show together. I took one of those classes many, many years ago. And one of my classmates was a gentleman from Rossmore named Brickman. And, uh, he had ramblings in Rossmore and everybody watched his show and loved it. And I think it was the one way that both of us could go ahead and feel confident that we could do a show that was worth putting on the air. So, and my, I did my show and it's still being run 14 years later, so it must've had something worthwhile. Now, I did it from Reader's Clubhouse, which was a very nice children's bookstore over on Cerritos. And they had books for adults too, but it was mainly for children's, uh, literature. And, um, it, it was very nice, but I was warned, "You do not do any advertising, Alice. You do not promote any particular items that she has in the bookstore." It's just to have this storytelling part, and she hired professional storytellers and I kind of introduced it and, uh, we talked about it a little bit. And I, I thought it was a, a nice show. And I was very pleased to be part of it. But believe me, we didn't say, and we have this book at 1295 and anything like that. That was absolutely no advertising on those shows. Um, I think we have to remember that now. And now we have to very clearly delineate what is the difference between advertising and sponsorship? That's a different animal, isn't it? So we have to be very careful there so that we don't get in trouble. I've read in here several places about rental of equipment. We would have equipment that could be rented. When I thought of the van, I thought, "Oh, and where does that leave us on insurance?" We would have to be very careful. Any piece of equipment, if somebody gets hurt with it, or if it's the van especially, we'd have to be very sure that we're following things that are going to keep our city safe. And also, I think we have to be careful, it, with our school districts so spread out, that we're not spending Los Alamos money to get things that are really of a benefit for people outside of our city area. What, what we spend money on should be, have a strong need and desire for our city. And if it, if the other areas don't want to, uh, feel that they should be involved in some way financially, then maybe we need to rethink some of these things. Because her time up there, your time, this lady's time, and, uh, our dear lady Catherine from the, uh, police department who gets all of these things ready for us, that costs us money. And that's something we have to take into consideration.
Madam Mayor, pro temp, members of the council and the commissioners and commissioners, this, this was brought up in one of our recent meetings and, um, they tasked me with, with, um, talking to Rossmore and I, I mentioned it to, um, their, their consultant, Henry Tabata. And, uh, he absolutely said they, they did not have an interest in, um, participating financially, so I just... Yeah, so I just wanted, um, I did make that attempt and I just, I just found out today that also, um, in addition to me, me doing it, then Angie also had, I just found out today that Angie had also, um, had a meeting with him. So you probably all know that, but...
Thanks, Greg. Tom, do you have anything to add?
No.
He can use that one.
Does this work?
Yes.
You sound great. Oh.
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead. Well, I, I have been very concerned about supporting Seal Beach and Rossmore. And, uh, I think, uh, that needs to be stopped. Very simple.
Okay, well, that's something we could quite discuss in a commission meeting.
Yeah.
If, if they would be willing to pay us, uh, for their services we provide, that's fine. I don't object to that. But it's, it's got to be fair.
If I, if I might, I think, I think, are you talking about for their meetings, Tom? Are you talking about for their meetings?
Yes, for their...
Their 50.
Yeah, maybe, well, my understanding of it, and it's probably very remedial, is that they pay someone to produce those shows and then they're just put on public access because everyone has that right? Is that the gist of it, Larry?
Yeah, what, there's two different issues here. Doug Woods is paid a salary-
Right.
-by the RCSD to produce their meeting. Doug Woods offered to rent the LTV equipment and the commission said no. Doug Woods now getting $500 a month to Long Beach City College to use their equipment. So the $5,000 a year, the 5,000, uh, 6,000 dollars a year is going to Long Beach City College. That could have gone to LTV. So I think when you're making these blanket policies, you got to think, it's a different way of funding it. Just it doesn't necessarily have to come from the government entity, because they're strapped, I mean, just like everybody else. But they're paying to get their monthly broadcasts. Doug has to rent equipment. He's renting, he wanted to go through here. He wouldn't give LTV the money to do it.
You know, let me just add a little bit of history on that, because I do remember when Angie came through. I don't remember it being an offer to rent equipment. I remember it being, uh, "We're not going to pay and we would like to use your equipment." Um, if they went on to Long Beach City and offered 5,000, I don't think anybody in our city would turn down a rental fee of 5 grand. My interpretation. The other thing I would just remind you, Time Warner Cable and Verizon for the residents in Rossmore are franchise agreements that are negotiated at the county level, very similar to the way we negotiated ours at the city level. So the issue isn't a subjective one, that we wish that RCSD would pay us money. We wish that the county would actually allocate the portion of their Time Warner contract and Verizon franchise fees to Los Alamos to cover their community. And the county, I believe, said no, or they use the money elsewhere. But that money by law gets allocated based on the 10,000 people over there and whoever subscribes. Same formula that we have here. There's no differentiation in the formula. So by calling the consultant and asking them, "Would, would you guys continue to pay?", versus calling Kristy Hennessy at Time Warner Cable or the Verizon VP that's in charge of our area, I, I think, I would be interested to know if we've done that, because that, that's more substantive and that, that really means something. If the county's refusing to pay, then, then I think then the commission should take that up. And, uh, and like I said, if, I, I think if they wanted to rent equipment and, uh, stuff like that, then more than welcome. The bicycling of CDs or DVDs, you know, if there's space available theoretically, uh, they, somebody, they can hand it to a Los Alamos resident. They could walk it down and say, "I'd like to have my thing put on," you know, based on the, the law, we, we would have to, as a third or fourth tier, run that DVD. But I, I don't know. I just, I hadn't heard that the county actually summarily rejected the request. And if anybody else has any information-
They did. I went and talked to them and more like having to go to the assistant and replace Mario. Mario was out there. I think I used to use him to skip us out.
I, it's so, before we vilify the R- I, so, before we vilify the RCSD, I, I would just say, I, I don't think that was a local decision, though, I think that was my point, is...
No, it wasn't, you're absolutely right, it was. The money was. I'm just saying the RCSD is hiring Doug Woods.
Yeah.
Doug has to rent equipment to enable himself to broadcast.
Greg?
And just to agree with Troy said, the second part of my conversation with Henry Tabata was exactly that, that about giving us the DVD for bicycling. So, that, that was part of the conversation, too.
Wait, Dean, I haven't had a chance to speak, we're already at almost 6:30. My understanding of this meeting ran from 5:00 to 7:00, so if you don't mind, I'd like to have my opportunity to speak, get the people to weigh in.
I'll go for that.
And I will, okay. Alice supports it, so it's good. What I, what I would like to say is, my feeling, too, when we left that meeting, was that we were really going to be addressing the list of items that we potentially would either move forward with or not move forward with. So, my recommendation beyond this point is that we don't look at these other two issues. One, I don't believe there's time, and two, I think there's, that was not our focus tonight, initially, when, when the ad hoc committee sent this forward. It was really to see if the two entities could work together to come up with a list together that we could support. And that's really what my understanding was. So Greg, if we gave you confusion in the direction of how we wanted this to go, I will apologize. Okay? Yeah.
That's why I had that. Excuse me, as the, the first item, yes, that was the, absolutely the main priority. But when we, we put the agenda together, I took both of theirs, hoping that they, they would be able to corroborate, as, as the commission had asked last month also, and then I just added these other items, because that's just what we had discussed. But no, you're right, absolutely, that was, that was the focus.
Greg, thank you, Greg, for the clarification. So anyways, my, my intent for this meeting would be move forward with the first item, and, and then if we need to at a later date, or we send it back to the commission for them to address the policies, because I believe they were the ones who initially put these together for us. I've been involved in this for a couple of years now, so I have a little bit different perspective than some of the people sitting at this table. And what I, what I think I see the number one issue for LA TV is, is sustainability. And Troy, you said it, it's the money. We get in this much money, we have this much in the savings account, once that money's gone, that's it. Unless we can find a way to help support LA TV. So my question to you is, we've, we've heard back and forth, different recommendations as to whether or not we can advertise. We're being told it can be done at the beginning and at the end. Could you clarify so that everybody at this table understands exactly what we're allowed to do, and how that might potentially benefit us in a financial way for LA TV? Can you take John's? We need more microphones, this is silly.
It's in the proposal.
I know.
Those are analogs.
I, I think we'd probably want to do a more detailed response on the, excuse me, I seem to have lost my voice at some point today, on the advertisement, and because we're new, having a little bit better understanding, is that this is now the city owns the TV station. But I think the problem with advertising it, be it on your website or on your cable station, is you are then opening up a public forum, and you can't choose your content. So, once you advertise, you can't go, oh, we don't like them, or we don't want to add, we don't want some, you know, we don't want prologist to be able to be putting up, aren't we great?
Right.
When their development comes in and advertises.
Well, two things, we could always control when they're played and do it at a time where it's not beneficial to them, but is there another form of us being able to do something that maybe it's a different terminology than advertising, that could give us the opportunity to maybe showcase businesses in the community so that they have an interest in LA TV and its success?
I, I think of when my children watched Sesame Street, and at the end of...
Right.
...the programming, it would say, this is brought to you by...
Right.
...Loyum Kek, and blah, 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 and blah, blah, blah.
So then now there's something that's permissible?
I think that's something you can do.
Okay, so, okay, so...
But I would definitely like to form, be able...
I will just add while they're looking at that, that our last city attorney looked at it and said that it was permissible. So, I think that we need a hard answer.
I'm showing you the...
Okay.
Pause that video.
But that's the policy.
Okay, so why don't we let Larry, because this, this is kind of what has happened in our last meetings, is there's a little bit of disconnect, so let's find out how we can get a solid answer so we can move forward. Okay, Larry, go ahead.
This one, because we went through this all in 2009, because we would not step in to try and raise money for the station unless we were allowed to take advantage of the law. This is the Public Utilities Act, it is, God, my eyes are bad now, but I think it's 5800, it's commonly called DIVICA, the Digital Infrastructure and Video Act. And if you're in 5870, basically, the policy there took the same lines. It said, all, all programs should be non-commercial, however, advertising, underwriting, and sponsorships shall be allowed as long as they're used to fund public or PEG-related activities. There's the exact one, if you want, because my eyes are bad, so I can't read it.
What constitutes...
Pretty much all our policies.
Right.
Yeah, that was, and specifically in our contract, CSNP's contract with the city, it said advertising was permitted, because I, I specifically made sure of that, because there's no way you can fund the station. I mean, we can talk all we want about how you're going to make it operate, but, and I'll tell you right now, the City of Los Angeles came out with a directive about a year and a half ago, it says, it says, take advantage of that language, it says maximize all possible usage of that terminology.
Okay, so, if we could get a solid answer, maybe you can touch base with Larry and John, I know they have differing opinions on that, but we, it takes us back to the money that sustains the station.
And, and I apologize, Kerry's really more of the cable expert in the firm, and I apologize.
Oh, no.
And he apologizes having to have the surgery...
Yeah.
...and not being able to be here tonight.
Well, we understand that 100%. So, if we could, city manager, get a definitive answer so that we can incorporate that into our policies, so that if it is a benefit, we can fully utilize it like they're doing in LA, because I think that's something that would answer a lot of issues for LA TV as far as lasting into the future and just beyond this revenue that we get per year and the reserve that we have that's, you know, over time going to be gone. A couple of things that I heard tonight are what I believe is at the core of the two gentlemen not being able to work together. There's a divisiveness where there's an ownership, like one believes they own the station and one believes that they own the van. The way I see it is, they are people from within our community that have access to any of those things. And I would like to see both of them be able to utilize both the station and the van to the fullest extent. So as far as someone offering a proposal for just the studio and expecting the person to give a proposal for just the van, I like to look at, at a global and see all of the items be brought forward for both, because LA TV is one entity, it's not two. And that's the way it's kind of being run right now. If we're going to talk about good policy moving forward with equipment, it's been discussed at some of our last meetings about redundancy. If we have the same pieces of equipment in the station that we have in the van, it's only logical, because if the van has a problem, you can use the equipment from within side the station and vice versa. What we're trying to do is we're trying to buy as little as we can and maximize the use that we have with regards to the things that we're purchasing. And with regards to the rental of the property, Alice, we had the same concerns when we talked about it. And, and the ad hoc committee came up with the idea that if we were going to offer our station, offer our van in an attempt to generate revenue for the station, we could put a clause in that saying that one of our representatives would go along with that to protect our investment. So, I think that when you talk about the possibility for commercials or recognition at the beginning or at the end, whatever that capacity is, we definitely want to get a solid answer on that. As far as renting of the equipment, as long as we're sending one of our own representatives to protect our assets, I don't see how that's a bad thing. And there are many cities that don't have the same kind of capabilities that we do here, we're very unique that way. So I think that's another way we could raise money. As far as working with Rossmore, I think that if some of the council members reached out and talked to them, maybe John, I know Troy, you know John, so maybe you could speak to him and see if there isn't a way that he could allow Rossmore to utilize our equipment so that it's a benefit not only to them but to us. And I agree completely with what Shelley was saying and what some of the others are saying. As far as the live streaming, I personally have DirecTV, so I can't watch the council meetings to review what I've said, and I certainly don't want to pay $25 every time to get a copy of the DVD. But we do need to come into, like she said, the 19th century. We, we have to make an investment in ourselves to be able to make money in the future. No one's going to utilize our assets as they are now because they're breaking down, they're, they're not up to snuff, they don't offer the HD compatibility. There's so many different things that would make us more marketable as a, as an entity. And I think, for me, the number one item was the funding, like you said, Troy, because without funding, we're not going to go any further. So to me, I would like to, as Richard said, look at this, find out exactly what we need, hash it out tonight, come up with what we need, the bare essentials, and move forward, because that's what this was for. That's what our last meeting was for. We're spending all this time in redundancy in a bad way and not getting anywhere. So if, if everybody's on board, I would like to see if we can open it up to the public, allow them to speak, and then come back and, and go through this list and see if there isn't parts of it that we can support that I think both of the producers would use, and, and it would benefit our community. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for oral communication. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward. Oh, there's no microphone. Please state your name for the record.
Stefan Hammond, from Greenbrook. Okay, from a viewpoint of somebody who watches LA TV, it seems to me like we can, we can produce all of the City Watch and Nice Place to Live shows that we want using the equipment that we have. Those, those shows look very good and they're very watchable, and as long as we have anybody else in the whole city who wants to make a show like that, a remote, like Larry did, or, or a, or a studio show, like both of them have done, we don't, it doesn't seem to me like you need new, new equipment. Now, I have heard incidental comments being made about how the, the switchers are, are failing badly, to the point where they are interfering with everything. In that event, you need, you need to buy some switchers of some sort, tricasters or whatever you want to do. If you are using somebody else's camera instead of studio, instead of city cameras to produce shows, then you need to buy cameras. But that's getting down, that's getting down really to what you were saying, Ms. Mejia, about going through this, going through the list and saying, what is this? Why do we need it? Do we need it because if we don't get it, we won't be able to produce shows because they'll break down? Or do we need it because it's digital, and we know that digital is nice? Well, we don't need digital, I don't think, unless we're, unless we're trying to do something different from what we're doing. And I don't think we've proved up to this point that we need to do anything different than what we're doing. I think it was a, it is, it's, it's a shame that 4th of July and the race on the base was not, was not programmed. Somebody needs to take responsibility for the fact that that wasn't done at all. There's some comment further on that seems to indicate that we're, that we're having too many, too many meetings of the commission. Certainly 12 a year isn't enough to get, to get, try to do everything we're doing, we're trying to do. Certainly, the thing that was accomplished last time was to buy T-shirts, but the reason we didn't make it, not we, I've, I've attended so many meetings, I'm, I'm sort of identifying with it.
We liked one of the commissioners, yeah.
But the reason the commission has not been able to, to come up with recommendations for purchase is that still, we don't have agreement among the people who want, the different people who want to buy stuff. We can't get them to agree. We can't get them to submit to us lists that the commission, I suppose, or, or somebody who can tell the difference between one piece of equipment and another, can make a decision that they want, that they want to buy it. That stuff hasn't been submitted to the commission. It's not the commission's fault, and it's no reason to cut the number of meetings down to six per year. As far as the audience is concerned, we have cable, we have Time Warner Cable TV, that's what we get at my house. Some other people have that other outfit that does cable TV. I don't know, I don't know whether they're running Channel 3 or not. But in any case, everybody who gets cable TV gets cable TV, but they don't necessarily get internet, they don't necessarily get phones. So anybody who's talking about getting internet is talking about getting it from someplace else than most people have it. We don't get, we don't have internet at my house. I can't parasitize off my next door neighbor's internet, and I can't get the, the Los Alamos internet unless I'm right in the office. I have to go over there to get there, you know, to get onto their wifi. So I don't think we should be talking about internets, unless we can come up with a technical Finally, as far as Seal Beach is concerned, on, on, on Time Warner Cable TV, we get Channel 6, which is Seal Beach Cable, Seal Beach Cable TV. Now, they're doing something, they're doing something technical which allows their cable TV to be watchable on our show, on our system. Whatever they're doing, if we want to get our shows on their system, then we need to do that. I don't know what it is. It's a technical thing, and it needs to be investigated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. I just want to say thank you to everybody for all the time that you put into this.
State your name.
Oh, Jody Schloss. And I just want to say thank you, because I appreciate the programming that I do watch. I, even if I don't watch every single program, I click through the station if I have the TV on, and I just say, oh, what's on Channel 3 right now? Personally, I'm getting sick of the, the baseball that's on. It's been running and running and running, and enough already with the...
Produce the show.
With the, with the Bronco, the Bronco series, I'm over that. But I just want to say, I was agreeing and disagreeing with some of the things that everybody had to say here today. And one of the things that I just want all of you to know is that I can watch, I have Time Warner, and I can watch Cypress's city council meeting, Garden Grove, I get Garden Grove Station, I can Stanton on Channel 16.403. So, the fact that Rossmore, you know, we don't get the money from them anymore, I don't think we're getting money from Cypress to, I watch Cypress here, I'm going to be watching them at 7 o'clock tonight, their, their city council meeting. And I do like to watch our city council meeting, or come to our city council meeting, but it's so different now, because I record things and I watch them at my time that I want to watch. And one of the things I like about other cities, for instance Huntington Beach, I've watched their council meetings, there's things that have happened over there that are interesting to me, that I want to watch a specific thing, and I watch that, but I do it all on the internet. I think to have the, the most high priority for me as a resident would be, and if I'm out of town and I want to watch our city council meeting, I want to, I want to be able to just, wherever I am in the world, I want to be able to go on the internet and see our city council meetings. That, to me, is top priority. And I think the way the world is now, and, and with, you know, even the young people now, at some point, they're going to be older, and they're probably still going to live here, and they're going to want to watch or be involved, and it can be with sports or any other kind of programming, John's programs that he does that are, you know, the documentary type programs. People, you know, ask about that, you know, they want to see it, so. And, you know, now they can, they went on, I think it was LA TV, I'm not sure if it was John's website or LA TV, that people go there to see that program. And if I want to see something that Larry has done, I want to be able to go to wherever, but we need to know what these are. This needs to be on the headers so that we know where we can go and watch whatever the program is, the 33 Acre Project, the Sugar Beet Festival, a baseball game, a basketball game, and archived. I should be able to, you know, say, oh, what happened at that meeting two months ago or a year ago? Why can't I pull that up? It all should be at our fingertips. And, and if we're going to be in the current century, I, I just think we need to do that. And, and I may not have Time Warner for long, now they're not showing Channel 2. Now, they're not showing Channel 2. I've got a couple of shows that I like and I can't see them, but I can go, I can watch them on the internet, so at least that's not so bad. So I went next door to talk to my neighbor who has DirecTV to see, okay, so she has all the same stuff I do, but now she has Channel 2. She still has it because she's not Time Warner, but she doesn't have Channel 3. She would like to watch the council meetings. She has DirecTV, no Channel 3, no Channel 3. So it's pretty, it's really crazy. There should be a way, I mean, if we can put people in outer space, why can't we get what we want on the internet, watching our local channels, you know, for anything? I want to be able, you know, I want when I want when I want it, you know? So we should be able to do that. And I, since I kind of was paying attention years ago when there was, you know, problems with the LATV, I definitely think, listening to what you're talking about, and I do feel that there's been great, great progress made, even though it may be boring to some people that are here tonight, that are here because they feel like they have to be here and they don't really want to be here. I think that everybody is acting like adults and getting along, and I'm glad to see that. It seems like there is better coming together and agreement between people that didn't necessarily agree with each other, you know, six months ago, a year ago, five years ago, three years ago. So I'm glad to see that. And I don't want to see the splitting of the child where, okay, this person wants this and this person wants that, well, let's cut it in half and just kill the baby. I don't want to kill the baby. I enjoy the programming and all kinds of programming. So I hope it can be worked out. I agree with a referee. Someone from the city definitely needs to come, even if it is a definite, permanent ad hoc committee that comes to all of the meetings, one or two council people that comes to the city council meetings to report back, you know, instead of making it city manager time trying to do this and that. Finance needs to be in charge to make sure where the money is going, what money's coming in, what money's going out. We don't want to end up like Buena Park or Stanton or some of these other places that have had problems in the past, you know, with embezzlement. Not that anybody here, I'm not saying that would happen here, but, you know, that kind of stuff does go on. So just to make sure everything is okay, I think that's a good idea. But some of the stuff I heard here tonight was very positive, and I'm grateful for that because, you know, years ago, this wouldn't have been like this. So thank you for, you know, being willing to work together. Please continue to do that because the public does want to see, you know, the P and the E and the G. So I hope it will continue, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to bring it back to the council and the board. If you guys will indulge me, I'll ask one question for clarification, and either John or Larry can answer, or Steve, sorry. That's right, you're part of the tech committee, aren't you? Okay, so with regards to the archiving and things being digital and being able to be on the internet, can you explain to us, those of us especially who were not at the last meeting, the benefit and the cost savings that will happen if we're able to do that?
There are no cost savings for having it on the internet. You have, what you can do is automate some costs so labor can be brought down. Right now, like if I put something on YouTube or if John puts something on YouTube, we're manually putting it on our computer, digitizing it, and then uploading it. I know Doug did it the last meeting and charged $50, so obviously it took him two hours to do that. That's a manual cost to make DVDs, you know, and digitize it and put it up. So one of the pieces of equipment I was recommending was, you know, the Peg Vault and Peg Central, so basically something could be, the city council meeting could be, boom, shot right to the deal, and it's automatically downloaded into the system. So it's not going to be available for another 15, I mean, at least a 20 minutes, depending on how long your meeting, maybe an hour, to process it. But you don't have to have somebody, you know, paying them $25, $50 every single meeting. But you're not really archiving it, you're not really saving costs just from archiving it. It's the process cost that you're saving.
Now, wasn't there a recommendation that dealt with archiving? I'm sorry, Larry, I don't remember exactly where it was or if it was in the meeting that we talked about. There's a great amount of discs or tapes and...
It's kind of a studio operation thing that needs to happen. We have a lot of tapes in there that...
Can somebody give him a microphone? Right.
They need to get archived. No, they need to get archived sooner than later because they're taped. So that's one of the studio operations that would fall under the station operations that needs to take place sooner than later.
Right.
Because we'll lose those if we don't do it soon.
Right. And one of the benefits, too, that we talked about, and I don't mean to jump in first, I'll let everybody have a chance, is we talked about the potential for if we could do, if we could bring those all up to current day to a DVD, people throughout the community have their children involved in events and they would like to buy a disc. That's a way for us to raise money for the station to also help sustain it. But at this point, it's not something that's feasible because we're so behind the times, and that's what these new pieces of equipment potentially could help us do. So I'm going to go ahead and bring it back and...
While I have the mic, can I?
Sure.
I just wanted to comment something that kind of went around. Because I've been through this process so many times, and especially with the school district. I've done it three times with LBCC, one time with Cal State Long Beach, and been involved in the unified school districts process as well. And it's, piecemealing is a tricky thing, especially with technology. It's not always the best way to go. And I've looked at our money situation, I've kept an eye on it the whole time, and actually I was part of the group that saved that money very carefully over years and years to put that aside for LATV to be able to do a capital overhaul, which we really needed to do before it got disbanded. So we had saved that money and had started the process of, you know, redoing everything because we needed to get it up to speed. Part of the tricky thing here is that the P, E, and G all do work together. I mean, I understand what you're talking about, and it does seem like there's a lot of P going on. But because the resources are shared so much, there's a lot of ways to do it really smart and do it more cost-effective than it would be to try and separate them out and do them separately. So that's where the goals and the long-range thinking has to be there so that when you do put it together, you save money. You look at the operation and go, you know, this looks like a great piece of equipment and it will do this, but how does it fit into how these three now entities are merging? You know, is that the smartest way to go? Maybe there's technology that works a little better than that, whatever. But you have to think those through. You have to know everything. The more you know going into this, the better you're going to be. So I've looked at the funds that we saved, our regular monthly operating budgets, everything, knowing that in order for LATV to succeed and move on, it needs at least support from the city, it needs another source of revenue. There's no doubt about that. We all know that. So that has to be there. But it also, the studio's in just horrible shape. It's embarrassing, it really is. I mean, every time I go in there, I just cringe because, and I put together every level of studio, believe me, I'm not saying it has to be, but it's just terrible. It's absolutely terrible. And at some point, in order for LATV to have a foundation to take off from, it needs to get it all squared away, get the control room, the studio, the van, everything up to speed. And so, again, piecemealing it, you start piecemealing it now, six months, again, now let's go to the studio and the control room and go, well, wait a second, this isn't now compatible and blah, blah, blah. And I can think of full systems that could serve us for pretty close to five years, you know, without any problem, unless there's another major, which, I mean, I've been in the industry for a long time, and I pretty much know as much as you can know, but it's, I mean, as a person, I can know. But there's no way you can obviously know what five years is going to bring you. But as far as I could, I could say with certainty that we could put together a system. There's, most of everything that's in there can last us that long and can do us well, yeah. So, and then the other thing, too, don't get, get the right impression about rental. You know, we went through this at City College several times, and we had a lot more resources to deal with. Renting is not something you can just do on a whim, and you can't, you can't put a system together and say, well, we're just going to take this guy and have him go with it or whatever. There needs to be some kind of, at least semi-routine, I want to say full-time, but maybe even part-time, if there was a part-time person that was maintaining this equipment all the time, then it might be a feasible thing. If the studio, if the van were up to speed technologically, had the right equipment, and somebody was maintaining it on a regular basis, then you might be able to rent it. Otherwise, it would be foolish to do it because the chance of hurting that equipment and the maintenance and everything else, the possibilities, the things that could happen to it, wouldn't be worth it. So, and that's been my experience because we went down that road so many times, and we had good equipment to rent, but it's like, how much do you weigh, what we're going to get versus, you know, the wear and tear and all the other stuff. Most of the time, it's not worth it, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry that you had left a little bit early when we discussed that. So we did discuss making sure that there were safety measures put in place and if there's any damage to the equipment. I mean, that was all discussed, and that's things that can be discussed at a later date. But it's just an idea, you know, it's just moving forward.
I just think, I've just been in that conversation before.
Right.
It really does take a full-time engineer to be with that equipment on a regular basis before they have a one-foot-out.
All right. So would we like to address the equipment, or are we looking at having just someone come in and make a recommendation? What's the will of the council and the commission? Richard, where are you at? Do you want to get in and get dirty and look at the lists and see if we can't come up with something? Because I do believe that there are some immediate needs. Should we maybe ask the three tech committee people?
My real impression is we're not there yet.
Okay.
Primarily because the two options that were presented to us don't really, thank you, don't cover the same scope. And I'd like to give John a chance to expand his. Really, what I'd like to do is take these reports and go, if I was in charge, what would I do? Lay out the game plan for what each person sees is the future of LATV, how we get there. I mean, I'm 100%, I'd love, I want to be all over YouTube. I want everything we do to be able to, so Jody can watch it at 3:00 in the morning, you know? That, you know, the average age of this group isn't watching TV on their computers or on their computers, they don't even use those anymore. But, you know, the, but there are, we're cutting out, as Shelley talked about, cutting out a third of our audience right now. So I certainly want to go that way. I still haven't heard the answer to the analog-digital question. I mean, I have a feeling that we want to be as modern as possible with our money, which would lead me to believe it's digital unless somebody wants to make a case for that. I would like to see all the sponsorship we could get, whatever's legal, and if it's just a little thing at the beginning of the front, you know, even if a restaurant wants to put something sponsored by...
Exactly.
And, you know, and they get a minute, you know, I don't see any problem with that, and if it's legal, I'd like to know if anybody else, if I'm missing something, but if anybody else has any problem, it's not, it's not like a pure thing. We just want to stay within the law and be able to raise the money if people are willing to pay for it to do so. But I'd like to see proposals that are comparable, I guess, is really where I am, in that both sides have thought it out. Are you guys willing to do that or...
I'm going to do it right now. It's kind of frustrating over here because you say one thing, and I'm trying to be in general, and all of a sudden, stuff gets, and I think a lot of stuff wasn't, was said uncontested, and there are some things that I just don't think are true. But I think the general case is, and I think this is the important thing, is if I were in charge, okay? If I were in charge, number one, first thing I'd do is, all right, you have a finite amount of money. You have to shepherd that and protect it because you want to get the biggest bang for your buck. So in doing that, I wouldn't make big, even though we may end up doing that, I wouldn't make big wholesale purchases first because we may not need all that equipment. So let's start. I think what we do need for the internet purposes, I think you need Peg Vault, that'd be my priority, and Peg Central. And it's not because we want to broadcast to Seal Beach, I want to make the programming more viable to the potential sponsors here in Los Alamos, and those people want to read Seal Beach. They want to read Cypress.
Why is that a different, why is that a better streaming solution than Ustream or any other streaming?
Why don't we let him finish instead of, you know, everybody will get that credit?
That's a good question. The exact reason is because you can automatically go to that system, and it isn't the same manual labor to do it. It's going right from electronics, the system is already here in place, and so you're just tapping into it. It's going to be a lot less man-hours, and when you multiply that times every year, I mean, every week, over a year, you've paid for the system. You can still do Ustream, but you can automatically make it available on, you know, electronics system by using those, that thing. Plus, to answer the government transparency question and all those.
I just asked because Ustream, it archives and...
No, I know exactly what it does, but you have to manually input it.
Well, it does it live.
Okay, but wait, let's let him finish. He's going to give his proposal of what he would do if he was, because we're just running short on time.
I'm sorry.
And Peg Central, so they go, they're part and parcel, okay? I would look at the light for the studio because if we don't have programming, more programming in the studio, John kind of bifurcates it, says, I'm van, I'm studio. Well, I probably got more programming in the studio the last year than he has, so I don't think that's a fair assumption. But I want to do a lot more in the studio, and you can't because everything looks the same right now. So you got to make it different. You also got to go in there and repair the control room. So I think you go, however many lights, like those parameters I set before, however many lights are necessary so we can do three to four different shows a week, however many microphones are necessary so we can do those three to four shows a week. I don't think it's that much. I think it could be done, you know, the labor can be done in the $2,000 to $3,000 range, I think, quite easily for all that stuff, and I think the equipment is not that expensive. I think you have to add, I would only buy two hi-def cameras right now. The reason being is I think those Panasonic's may be workable. We don't know, but let's make sure they aren't workable before we buy two more. I mean, for the amount of programming we do and what we do, we don't need to buy four cameras right now. I think if you buy two, that means you have two new ones and you already have two hi-defs in there. We already have two hi-defs in the truck, so that's four, and that's all you need to make it work. Now, maybe after six months, we go, eh, maybe there's a little too much work, let's buy another one, but we haven't spent the money. Because if we found out we didn't need it, it's great, we haven't spent the money upfront.
One sixty, is it?
Yeah. The cameras, we're both in agreement on. The audio board, I think we're both in agreement on that one. You need that just because you got to upgrade. It's just an old system, and if you're going to have like a band in there or something like that, you need, or six guests, you need a bigger system. The switcher, I would get one Tricaster for the simple reason, you get a lot more bang for the buck. Now, people are saying stuff that is unreliable. That is most, that Tricaster has been asked to do more than any other switcher in the history of this station. It has put out over 200 hours of council meetings, over 120 hours of sports, another 30 or 40 hours of non-sports events out in the public. It has been used a lot of different things, it's been used in the studio, plus it has all the graphics capability. So it's been over 400 hours of use, which is a lot. Nothing in the history of the station comes even close to that. So it's broken down, what, four times? And I think two or three of those were human error, could have been our fault. I don't think we've all learned how to use all the capabilities. I know, you know, the last time Doug said it broke, or it didn't break, it had some problems with it like a couple days before, and when we turned it on on the first day of that World Series, it started smoking. So that was the issue there. But I'd buy that one because you get the most bang for your buck. If that thing works fine after three or four months, we don't need to buy a more higher-end system. If that thing is insufficient for our needs, well, yeah, let's get the higher-end system for the studio. That's fine. But I think let's try the lower-cost one first, save ourselves some money, I think it's a little more prudent. I personally think you get a lot more bang for your buck because it comes with graphics packages and a lot more things, and that is already used by the Oscars, the Emmys, the New York Giants, the Miami Heat, it's used in Miss Universe pageant. I think if they're willing to take a chance on it, its quality and reputation is already proven, and it should not even be questioned. Cables, monitors, to upgrade to digital, that's an $18,000 investment by our costs. Do we make it? Because anything we buy upgrades, we can't use it in a hi-def in the van unless we change that whole van configuration around. Because like the monitors are no good, you know, you need, you got to replace a lot of different things. That's just the bottom line there. Maybe not have to do it, but it's like we're buying a good bottle of champagne and then drinking it with ice or something, I don't know.
Out of a coffee cup, yeah, exactly.
So those are the seven or eight things that I would do immediately. I think that's about a $55,000 cost, I think, yeah, $53,000, $55,000 cost with shipping and tax. And I think everything we're talking about doing, we could probably get away with that. And I personally think if we showed that we're smart enough, doing those smart things, we're deserving of getting the other money down the road because I think you'll see we've saved money. I mean, there's a device that I mentioned called the three-plate. If you want to rent out that truck, which I think you can do, that makes that project or that truck sexy, as they used to say in the business, because it's something that not a lot of sports people have. It would make our broadcast, football and basketball, really, really good. But that's not a key thing, you don't have to have that, but it'd be something really nice. So anyway, that'd be my, if I was in charge, that's what I would do. And I would ask you to put us in charge to implement it because we had a record before of, we said this is what we're going to do, and we got that damn working. And we've been waiting for two and a half to three years now. And we've been waiting for two and a half to three years now getting that studio working. And I think if all parties were judged equally here, you know, it'd be a different way of looking at things.
Would you be willing to write that down? I feel like I'm in the same position I was in the budget meeting where the numbers, you know, the things are flowing around so fast. I know my colleagues didn't have a chance to write any of it down and.
He passed these around, actually.
No, this is a different.
That was a different one?
I wanted.
Okay. I mean, from now till 7:00 o'clock, I'm not willing to make a decision on this.
Right.
I mean, I read this for three hours yesterday and three hours today.
This is like the budget.
It is the budget, yes.
Everything is in here, is in the, I just tried to consult.
But I mean, I want to know if John agrees. I want to know where the agreement is, that type of thing. Either, so, go ahead.
No, I was just saying, I'm actually on that, my name is on that list. And I, for the most part, I agree, but you, there's so many things that we have to, we have to look at, like, thank God, he says the Tricaster. He named all those things, those people that use it, you know. That was probably some second unit thing. Nobody uses this as a main piece of equipment. No network does. This is a very small end thing, but it's great for people like us.
It was a live streaming for the Oscars, live streaming for the Emmys.
Thank you.
They use sets. I mean, they're spending money. It was affiliated with the network. It's like, everybody has an opinion.
Yeah, no.
Nobody backs it up.
The, thank you. You're right. No, absolutely. The thing that really scares me is when I hear things like, well, let's buy two of those and try it out, see how it works, you know? Doesn't work.
It scared me too.
Oh, my gosh! Ooh, that scared me.
We didn't say that. We said buy one and try it out.
Oh, okay. All right. The other thing is, this is the thing you guys really need to consider is the studio. I guess I'm trying to act as a buffer, but my name is on Larry's thing. So, I bet, I mean, that's the one I'd go with if I have to go with one of them. The studio really can't do everything. It's a small, little closet. Okay? So, it's not going to do that. I mean, you can cram a bunch of people in there and try and do a six-person show, but it's going to look really weird. And so, the smart thing to do, in my opinion, is to look at that space and figure out what is the most I can get out of it. And then, just don't exceed that. You just can't. If you want to do something with more people, then use the van, go to a location where you can handle more people. But to think you can put, I mean, I know they've shot around, let's put a set over here and a set over there. And I go, you don't have enough room to put one set there, really, you know, without hitting your head or bumping into something. I mean, it's just, it's ridic, by any standard in the world, that's not a studio space. That's a closet, okay? The smallest studio I've ever seen in my life is three times that size. So, it's just ridiculous. And so, and quality is another thing, you know? It's easy to throw this stuff around, but who was it that mentioned quality right off the bat? Somebody had mentioned that.
I did.
Yeah. That that was, that's right, that's really important, you know? Quality is really important. So, that studio can't do really good quality stuff unless you maximize it and just use it for what you can. Because at Long Beach City College, the first big studio we had was still a small studio by most standards. So, we didn't do big shows in there that we could, we had to do those someplace else. But the ones we did do, we did really good. So, those, that's mine.
Go ahead, Richard.
Our attorney has to go to the planning commission.
Oh, okay.
Turned out as but fun.
Okay, well, here's the thing that I want to, okay. The thing about this is, and I understand, Richard, you want to delay it because you want to be able to understand better. But this has been going on for quite some time. I'm not saying we make a decision tonight, but I'd like to have a commitment for all the people involved that at the next meeting that we do this, that we have an agreement because it's just redundant. I mean, we keep going through the same process, like Shelley said, and there's no outcome because people are not informed enough. And so, we formed the tech committee. And then, there was a problem with the tech committee. Three of them recommended one way, two recommended the other. We got the recommendation for just the two. So, I think that, let's just realize that potentially, maybe we need to look at having someone oversee the studio. I think that will be the best way we can spend our money because we have two really passionate people that want to serve this community, have done so. John's done some great documentaries. Larry's been involved in fundraising events here in the community, starting our first festival, which I can't tell you how many people reached out to me and said, this is such a great thing for our community. So, I would just like a commitment, if we're not going to come up with an answer now, we schedule another meeting very soon and we come up with an answer for these people. That way, Alice has time to digest because she says she's interested in looking at this recommendation also.
Mayor Protem, I'm sorry. I'd just like to interrupt to say that the agenda is to review and discuss and not take any action tonight.
Right. And that's why I'm saying to them, let's just make sure that we're ready to make a decision at the next meeting. So that, so that we can either, well, I can't say that on a camera, but either do it or move forward if you get my drift. Because we're wasting everyone's time if we can't, if we don't have the constitution to make the hard decisions and just say, this is the way it's going to be. We don't want to irritate or upset either one of these people, but we've got to move forward.
It's not the decision. It's the fact that we don't have the data, I don't think, to make the decision. We have two, in my mind, non-competing proposals. One only covers the studio. The other one is pretty much all-encompassing, covers six different facets. And even if we're looking at Larry's, I'd like to know what John thinks about it.
Right.
Vice versa, which is why I was saying, could we get a written something to review? I'd love to make a decision. I mean, as much fun as yesterday and today have been, one more time will be fine.
That's right. Okay. And what I'll say is, take into consideration that we need to encourage them to embrace both pieces of the station instead of just, just the one that they have a heart for. Do you know what I mean? Because then, then you do get a whole proposal instead of just partial proposal. And that's really, is finding a way for them to not have to butt-head so much and have somebody in between, God help them, that can do that for us.
But that's why we're giving them so much latitude is, we want them to be able to both coexist. Because, you know, nobody's going to argue they don't do excellent work.
Right.
So, it's just, you know, if we could set out the process or the schedule for purchasing the equipment, you know, what would we do at first? What, you know, what would be step two, that type of thing.
Right. And they can't agree on that. And that's why we're here.
Okay.
We asked them to get together and come up with a joint proposal of something that they could agree on. I even asked them, diagram it out. Put the things that you agree on and then things you disagree on. You can prioritize them with a number or something, but that way, it's easier for us to see what they truly want first. And we can't even get an agreement on that.
Jerry, I can, one thing unfair about that is that, and John's kind of said it and Richard alluded to it. His area that he's not really concerned with is the area that I have a priority on. So, it's harder for him to place priority on somebody he doesn't think is important. So, I think the council leaders, the one has to make the decision, yeah, we think this should be done. This is an area that we find of importance. And I think, to me, I'm just getting tired of this whole process. I think I recommended this two years ago.
Right.
You know, because I just got tired of meetings where everybody kicks down something, but they don't make suggestions. And that's what the tech committee has been and that's what this whole process has been. Make suggestions, just solicit RFPs and have somebody turn it in and then go with that. I think that would be the easiest way.
Right.
Just define it. Because this is getting silly to me.
I know you said that.
I've got a question.
Well, it's 7:00 o'clock.
I'll make my question really fast.
What we can do is, John, go ahead. You didn't get a chance to speak and Larry did, so why don't we go with you first? And if we could keep it.
A number of these points, I'll just address some of the things that Larry just said.
Great. Perfect.
Peg vault and peg central. Unbelievable. 100%. I mean, I'm not, I don't think it's not important. I don't think van operations is not important. I'm wise enough to know, I'm not wise enough to run van operations and Larry and Kirk will do a good job. I'm lucky enough to do that. That is why, if that's not in my proposal, not because I don't think it's necessary or shouldn't be funded. I'm just referring to the guys I think can do a better job. That's all. That's why I concentrate on the studio. I don't need a studio manager.
Okay.
I'm not trying to be diminutive about any of the other operations at L A TV. I'm just acknowledging there are other people that do a better job. So, I'm not going to inject myself upon them and tell them what they need to do. But I know something about the studio, not just the equipment in the studio, what it needs, but about how to make that studio interact with the public and get the public into that studio and support us and then maybe begin sponsoring this. And then maybe begin, then maybe the dollars and the business model can come forward, great by great, step at a time, which I like your idea when we talk about building this thing one step at a time. I agree with that. My proposal doesn't even recommend purchasing all this at one time, but I do think that core equipment around which everything else is built should be considered carefully and purchased primarily so that everything else can then be built upon it. Larry talks about lights in the studio. I completely agree and I think we had a complete agreement on trying to bifurcate the studio into several sets if possible. Maybe use the DMX lighting controller to be able to set that up and so that we can go directly to different lighting arrangements. I don't think the studio is a train wreck, as Steve indicates. I think it works. I think all you have to do is look, go on air and look at it. You can see from, for example, CityWatch, a steady progression and a progress of the technical capabilities that with lighting and other parameters that we've been able to achieve with CityWatch. And Larry's doing the same thing. His first program, sit-down talk show, you know, not so good, but he's presently, that program, the lighting arrangement has gotten extremely better. We're all working at it. We can make that studio work. It's not a closet. It's what we have to work with and it's precious to us. And we're going to develop that and we're going to do the best we can out of it. Microphones, we need microphones. I agree with that. The cameras, as Larry said, we've already agreed, that we both agree on the same digital cameras. I won't go into the technical details of it, but we agree and that's probably all he'd really want to know, right? The switcher, there is a problem for me because although we use the switcher, and frankly, in the studio, I only use the switcher as a frame synchronizer. I don't use the audio function out of it. I get a buzz out of the machine. I've worked with it, tried to work with it. I've just gone around it. I've had problems scheduling it when it's elsewhere and I've had to rearrange programming in the studio because it wasn't there. And I don't, not blaming Larry, I'm just saying, we got one piece of equipment that gets hot-potatoed around the entire three phases of L A TV operation. It's bound to be problematic. So, we do definitely need a switcher and that is a, very much, a core item for L A TV. I just don't believe in the Tricaster. And by the way, neither do most qualified production engineers in the broadcast industry. And I found this out conclusively when I came back from NAB this year in Las Vegas, the National Association of Broadcasters. One of the main reasons I went there was to find out who believes in the Tricaster and who doesn't. I couldn't find anybody to raise a flag for it, except other than very specific, as Steve said, specific tasks for it, secondary task, second unit mixes and so forth. It is not to be relied upon as a main switcher in almost all broadcast situations. There are folks even locally here that have production operations that are in broadcast. And Larry says, okay, get somebody to, you know, come up and make a statement. Well, there's a gentleman that has worked with the L A TV in the past, who is an eminent authority on production switchers and uses them today and works all over the world with production switchers, and his name is Bob Bowling. Bob Bowling says about the Tricaster, "I would never buy an analog switcher like this, such as the Tricaster." It has some old, they put in it, old boards, boards that are at least four years old and they're just trying to get rid of them. It's four-year-old technology. It's really a cheap product," he said. "A lost leader," he called it for new tech. Some of you may not know what a lost leader means. It means you put something out there that you're not going to make, you know you're not going to make any money on, but either you're depleting stock or you're trying to chum the waters for something else. He said, "A lost leader for new tech that they sell to try to get you into something bigger," because they do have bigger switchers that they'd like to eventually get, you know, the low-end people into. It's a very low-end piece of equipment. I don't trust it. I don't think, and I think the track record of the Tricaster verifies that. I think in certain situations, it might be applicable, but not as a mainline switcher and certainly not as a main switcher in a studio. There are other switchers, and I've recommended possibly two, Panasonic 410 and the Foray XT-100. Both of those do everything that the Tricaster does except ingest and store large clips of information, what we call B-roll sometimes. But that B-roll can easily be serviced from an outboard computer laptop that can then feed it into. That's part of the reason this thing crashes. It's a computer. It overheats and it crashes. And so, by going to another type of switcher, more conventional switcher, that does not break down and that does do almost exactly the same thing that the Tricaster does, and in some cases, even more, I think we are guaranteeing ourselves sustainability in the studio of a piece of equipment that will be dedicated to the studio. It is a far more reliable piece of equipment that is corroborated by statements from professionals that I've talked to in the last six months or last year, all over the place. Even the guy that rented the Tricaster to Larry for L A Y B Bronco World Series, which was, by the way, I think, a great event and not just because I had a grandson in it, but even he said, oh, no, I don't, I wouldn't use it as a mainline switcher. I use it just to do this, this, and this. And I know other people that have Tricasters and use them for commercial production, but they only use them for a very specific purpose, maybe to stream with, maybe as a frame synchronizer. They do not use them as a mainline switcher. It's a mistake. And to buy another one to, you know, because it's, you know, big bang for our buck, well, when that big bang blows out, then we have to have another one back to back it up. It's the same motherboard, it's the same computer internal workings, and it is likely going to perform in the same manner. It will fail. And I think that's something that I don't want to see happen in the studio. And so, that's why I'm recommending something other than a Tricaster 40. And by the way, Tricaster 40 is now $5,900, $6,000 plus $2,000 for the, what they call the controller, what you might know as a keyboard, like a computer keyboard. That's $8,000. I can buy the 4A switcher for approximately $8,300. I can buy the Panasonic switcher that I'm recommending for about $9,400. So, that's not that much of a spread between this Tricaster and some real broadcast switchers.
But could we use it in the van?
No. No, it's dedicated to the studio. If you want a Tricaster, as I said the other day, let's consider, let's consider a Tricaster for the van, if that's what they want. I don't want to tell them what they need, I'm not going to presume on them what they need in the van. I think that's, that would be hubris on my part. But I think the studio deserves a dedicated piece of equipment. Maybe the cameras can float around, and we can swap back and forth the cameras, but a switcher is a central core piece of equipment, and it needs to be dedicated for the studio, and stay in the studio, and be there when we need it at all times.
Can I ask you a question, John? If, if the switcher, if that's the right terminology, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Fails in the van, then the only option they would have would be to rent another one like they did for the World Series. They wouldn't be able to use yours because it's not compatible, correct? There'd be no redundancy, is what I think.
It would take too much to modify it and work in the van.
Okay.
We do have another switcher, though. We have the Tricaster broadcaster, which we currently own. It's standard definition, but it could be used. That could be a backup.
Okay.
They don't have to have redundancy upon redundancy. I mean, it's, it's, it's the Jaguar argument all over again. You own two Jaguars. Why? Because you know the one you're driving is going to, is going to fail you, so you have to go back and grab one that's in your garage.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a good argument for broadcast equipment.
No. I'm just thinking about making sure that you can do all of the programming, and if there's a shortfall on either the studio or the van, it does show good sense, but I'm not the expert on it. So, anyone else?
I just have an idea. I was going to fill this out earlier. It's kind of crazy, but really, a third party is really needed here. That's absolutely, that has to happen. Because I can, I can, you know, rebut half of what he just said, but the half of what he said was absolutely true. So, it's like, I can make any one good or look bad, you know? And in the tech meeting, there was so much of that going on, I just got tired of it. I, I don't have the interest in what they do as far as the program and stuff. I'm not producing shows, so I just want to put together the strongest possible studio to do the most things, and last the longest, you know, that all that. And it just seems like if there was a third party that could, they could, I'm just throwing this out to you guys to figure out how you'd like to inform this, but that seems to me to be the best way to go, because that person can see, see through all of those things, be able to say, "Okay, here's something that's absolutely going to work, and it's the best, allow them both to do all the things they need to do, and we don't have to go back and forth on this." Just an idea.
Troy, anything?
Yeah, just, you know, let's just give specific direction that we're going to come out with a unified list.
Right.
We're going to give the city manager the authority to potentially find a third party to facilitate us through that process, because clearly, I'm, I think we are done. And we will make a decision, one way or the other, in the next meeting.
Right.
Honestly, I, it's hard for me, talking about switchers and all this. I can't believe I'm sitting in this going, I just, I can add no value to this. And I honestly, so I just would like to be able to, I'll vote on the list, and the pros and the cons, and it'll be one list. The other thing, you know, if the studio is small and unsalvageable, or the beautiful jewel that we need to protect, you know, the JPA idea that we had of switching out, I mean, if, are we throwing money into something that is, is too small, and trying to renovate something that doesn't have the production capability? Fountain Valley, a couple of different cities have a JPA, and they pay, and think about this, if we get past this decision, you know, we're going to potentially hire somebody to be part-time. And, you know, and I'm, I'm a believer now. I think we have to. I think we need to get spend to have somebody oversee this. So, that's an amount, to modernize it, it's amount. So, we're looking at probably at least, you know, anywhere from 60,000 to 100,000, and then a recurring cost of, you know, I don't know, 20,000, 30,000 for a part-time person that's staffed to Greg. And at that point, how much is it to join a JPA tomorrow, that's got all the equipment in it? And we put all of the money in the van operations, and we give the rest to community producers like John, and we say, "Go do what you do." You know, still going to have somebody here. We're still going to have a server switch thing. You know, everybody's going to bicycle the other things. But, but the facility that we're in, too, we're sharing with four other cities, and it's, and I think they probably have got those decisions down.
Well, and take into consideration that the upgrade to the facility out there was at least $10,000 the first time. And so, like you're saying, maybe throwing good money after bad. I'm not, I'm not disparaging anything, because I didn't do anything on it. So, I won't take away from all the efforts that the people have put into it. But, like I said, maybe we need to have something be a little different, where we pay someone to manage this for us.
But Troy, even if today, we shut that studio down, we got our, I believe we got our return on investment.
Oh, no, no.
And I do think, and I'll, I'll give kudos to John.
Right.
Whether you think that that is the best studio or not, that guy's heart and soul was in the building, doing everything he could.
Right.
And I think, and you know, I've been through a couple TV shows in there. I, you know, I was impressed, and I mean, that shows you how high the standard is then. Because, you know...
I gotta, I gotta get the, I don't think it's a bad place at all. It's a great little place. It's just little, that's all. It's just, I'm just saying being realistic. I didn't say...
We're the second smallest city in Orange County.
Okay, guys, let's let Troy finish up, so we can get this done.
To the specifics, we give direction to look at the list. I like Dean's idea of the policy, because you know, the policy, if we sit back and we really want to be in this business, then we should probably look at a third option, which is, is a JPA something we need to be looking at? And then, you have the third-party person that's, will work for Greg to be able to figure it out. Honestly, I hate spending that money. But, I mean, I, I know Greg has been tapped for everything he has, and I'm, and there's nobody, you know, left in staff to be able to help. I mean, and so, I, I think we got to spend the money to...
I agree.
...make a really bad, bigger decision. So, I, I'm for that. I just want it to be action-oriented, and I'm, yeah.
Now, the direction you're giving, are you giving it to the commission? Are you giving it to the tech committee? Are you giving it to John? Are you giving it to Larry?
I'm giving, I'm giving it to the city manager.
To the city manager.
And I'm paying their money.
Perfect.
And I, that's, and Greg, and you've got spending authority up to 10 grand, so, and I'm not giving it. It's got to be voted on. We're not voting today. But I, I just want to make sure that that's what I would hope that we would do, because that, you know, and then we go from there. Because I know Greg will, you know, get it done, and be able to facilitate it through. That's what I'd like to do.
Dean, anything?
Oh, I think that's, I think that's the right approach. I still feel that, that we need to go back through that rules or the policy, and fine-tune that, so that these guys have an idea of what they're there to do. I mean, it, it's frustrating that we're approving, the biggest thing that Shelley's done in three months is approve T-shirts.
Well, I think they're at the same deadlock that we are sitting here at this table today.
And so, what can we do as a council to help facilitate that? To do a, to do a joint meeting and go page by page on, on the policy, and say, "Yeah, this is good. What does this mean?" I mean...
Shouldn't we, I'm sorry, Dean, but shouldn't we have the commission do the policies and procedures? Because weren't they the ones that did it in the first place?
No.
Yes, no?
Originally, yeah.
No.
Well, that's...
Two, two...
I'm just saying, initially, we charged them with the responsibility of doing that. I think it should go back to them. We shouldn't be micromanaging as little as we possibly can. I think they're perfectly capable, they have enough experience to do it, and I think it should go back to them.
That's fine.
Give us something to do.
Yeah, so, so that's part of the action, then, would be to have that come back, and then agreed to say.
Good.
I was told that, that it go to the commission, and they go through it with the recommendation that the final approval goes to the city council.
That's right.
Okay.
Do you want to get inputs?
Yeah.
Can we get inputs? So, if we got...
Well, sure. We've got the ad hoc committee.
Who's the chair of that? I mean, we can just spend...
It's John.
We could do that, too. We could have a good ad hoc committee, and then it's the council.
Yeah. Why don't we do that? Because that's the process.
As long as it's not another three and a half hours.
Look, you took the job...
It comes away with nothing.
No, no.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I can do like the mayor didn't, transfer it.
There you go.
Richard, what are you doing?
That's what I'm thinking of.
So, what's the motion, to go to, go to the commission, then to ad hoc?
Okay. One thing that I've been hearing for as long as this group has been reactivated, is, "Well, we're putting all kinds of nice equipment into the studio, but the studio's way too small. And, but we can do this, but we really can't do that the way we want..." I want to know if there is no possibility of ever having a larger area in the city, a city building, that can be used for the studio? Now, I think back to when we leased property in the industrial area, and we had our LATV studio, and we could do all kinds of things there. And it was very nice. But that studio is so small, and I think we're going to be frustrated throughout the years that we have it there, because it doesn't accommodate all of the things that we really would like to do. Is it impossible to think of a, a different place within the city buildings, or is it just...
It's $18,000 a year, which is why they stopped doing it. We only make $26,000.
The JPA would be a good approach.
Which is what Troy said. If you join with other cities, there's a central area where you can use.
I was thinking, is there absolutely no possibility of having a space that we already have here that could be used as a television studio?
Where?
I just don't know that we have that.
We're pretty, we're pretty impacted.
Okay.
But we could keep an eye out in the city.
Yeah. If, if, because...
If it's available, but at this point in time, it doesn't seem feasible.
Okay. Well, and I know we had that studio that we leased, and I understand we don't have the money to do that now. Because once they cut down our percentage, wow. In fact, we were even going to go over to the base, and have the studio over there, and they were going to give us the facility and all, and, oh, we thought that was going to be so nice, and then things changed. So, well...
Didn't meet the mandate rule, did it?
Yeah.
Let me say one thing about JPAs.
First of all, let's let Tom go, and then we'll wrap it up. Tom, do you have anything else to add? Okay. Really quickly, John, and then...
Well, just one thought about JPAs while we're all thinking about a JPA. I, I produce programming at some JPAs, for Time Warner, when they had a group, you know, which is a joint type of effort. Everybody sign, comes into a studio, you've got your time. It, it is a grind, and it is not easy to do. You have your time, you're, you walk in, there is no latitude, you're in, you know, your, your program runs over a little bit, they turn the lights off, and you're out. It's a very difficult environment for a public access, or a, any kind of producer to really do a television program out of. Even in Long Beach, when they started their system backup, they've now got 150 producers in Long Beach, when they, and they've just started their public access up again. I mean, that's the kind of response you can get when you've got it together. But, those, the, the rules for going in and working in a, in a JPA environment, where there are 150 producers coming in behind you on a weekly basis, is a real grind. It's very difficult to produce that way, a quality program for your city, in, in a way that is, that you could actually make some, you know, a dent in it, really make some out, put some output out there, and do a program series. It's really tough working with a JPA that way.
Thanks, John, for that input. So, I guess the motion, or the action for the future meeting is to look into and investigate someone who could be the potential, I guess, general manager, look into the potential for the JPA.